Safe streets, vibrant neighborhoods, successful business and commerce. These are things that make a healthy community. We are a diverse community, rural, suburban, urban. A multitude of languages and ethnicities, ages and experiences. We are a collaborative community. Public-private partnerships make us a model community that others want to follow. It is what makes us unique. It is what makes us strong. The employees of Kent County reflect our diversity and seek to serve our communities.
People in this county, in this area, we wrap our arms around each other. We come together to collaborate, to solve problems. We're all working for the good of the whole. And I think that's wonderful. And you can see it. You can see it as you drive around Kent County.
Our impact starts the day a baby is born and a birth certificate is issued. To protecting children from deadly diseases through vaccination, to the public safety and justice provided by law enforcement and the courts, to offering veterans services and caring for the elderly. Every day, we work to keep our communities robust.
I think if you are somebody who's interested in serving your community, in building a strong knowledge base and a good group of people to work with, then the county is one of your best employment opportunities out there. It's been completely rewarding in every way I could possibly explain for 26 years. And I feel like I grow every single day still today.
Leading these dedicated employees are 19-member Board of Commissioners and our county Administrator-Controller, along with our elected officials and appointed department directors, placing emphasis on civic involvement, quality housing, vibrant neighborhoods, and strong solid infrastructure to allow businesses to thrive. Professional, dedicated, collaborative, and innovative.
Behind the scenes collaboration between foundations, charitable organizations, nonprofits, for-profit businesses, public sector demonstrated through the county, the city of Grand Rapids, the townships, all the cities and the villages in our area. If we don't come together, then we will not have the strength that we have today. And I only hope to build upon that.
Our aim is to make our communities the best they can be. We are involved in exciting development projects, sustainable recycling programs, and creative progressive prevention programming. We partner with elected officials, impacting policy ideas that become great achievements. We seek opportunities to reach out into the community and offer our services to help our residents make Kent County thrive.
Our relationship is solid, both from a staff standpoint at the county level, as well as the Board of Commissioners. And they understand what we do and the benefits that we can do for the community. And vice versa, we couldn't do what we do without the help of Kent County.
While most of us are busy running our lives, Kent County's elected officials, Administrator-Controller, and over 1,600 employees are serving the communities where we live our lives, so we can all have a place we are proud to call home. Kent County, its life well-run.
Good morning. It is my pleasure to call to order the Finance and Fiscal Resources Committee meeting on Tuesday, June 19th, at 8:30. I'd like to welcome fellow commissioners, guests, other members of our staff who come today. It's really nice that you take time out of your schedule to come to our meeting. With that, we will start with public comment. Is there any public that has any comments? If so, please come up. State your name and your address.
Can you hear me all right?
Yes.
Okay, great. My name is Kate Pugh Walters. My address is 2260 Cascade Springs Drive in Cascade Township. I am the co-chair of the First Steps Kent Organization, together with Lou Chamberlain, who could not be with us this morning because it's All-Stars season. I'm a resident of the fifth district of Kent County. First, I'd like to thank the Millage Subcommittee for their thorough and diligent work in reviewing a request for .5 millage to serve the youngest children of Kent County. Together, they have poured over data, testimony, and asked many questions about this important request to serve our youngest children in Kent County. Over 15 years ago, it was evident that children who were starting kindergarten today were not ready. Over the past 15 years, we have studied the effects of health, system coordination, and access, and have had on brain development to prepare children for kindergarten. The data is clear. We developed pilot programs to test different methods of service affecting these young lives. We collected data and worked together with other organizations to identify those services that were most critical for all children. There are some really good programs out there. Some programs that were fortunate enough to have in Kent County, and others that are nationally recognized as high impact. This millage request for .5 mils is the result. This request would not only bring existing and proven programs to scale and serve most of the children in Kent County, but would also provide a structure of coordination, data collection, and evaluation that would prove once again that Kent County is a leader in serving children zero to three. We believe, together with other organizations, such as the business leaders of Michigan, that the importance of addressing the whole child is critical for the future not only of our county and our state, but certainly our nation. I know that you understand these facts. In addition to bringing many of the proven programs already to scale, this .5 request includes fixed structural costs, such as coordination and evaluation, that exist no matter what the millage amount is. I would respectfully request that you consider these fixed costs as you deliberate the amount of the total millage. Even an increase from the recommendation of .25 to perhaps .3 or .35 would allow the county to demonstrate that these programs work while allowing the infrastructure needed to administer, coordinate, and demonstrate them. I can't tell you how grateful we are after careful consideration that the Millage Subcommittee recognized the importance of all of these programs as they recognized the .25 millage be considered by Kent County voters. I would respectfully request, however, that you consider the infrastructure and baseline costs needed to make these programs most successful. I believe that Kent County voters are ready to make that decision as well, in keeping all of Kent County's children and giving them the greatest chance of success. Thank you.
Okay, anyone else? All right, seeing none, I will close public comment, and that will bring us to the consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Moved.
Support.
Moved and supported. Anything that has to be pulled from the consent agenda? Okay, seeing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. The consent agenda passes. That brings us to item number three on our agenda from the Administrator's office. Approve IS funding agreement appropriation of commitment and authorize Board Chair to sign. Wayman?
Yes, this is a request to approve the Auxiliary Internal Services Fund Funding Agreement to appropriate $1.5 million estimated revenues, which includes $750,000 from the community stabilization revenue and budget lapse of $750,000 to the 2018 mental health budget in the general fund, subject to a fully executed agreement and authorize the Board Chair to sign. Several years ago, the state transitioned from 18 prepaid inpatient health plans to 10. In West Michigan, five community mental health service providers, organizations, provider organizations, which included Allegen, CMH, Muskegon CMH, Network 180, Ottawa CMH, West Michigan CMH, all merged into one PHP that also included a regional substance use coordinating agency called the Lake Shore Regional Entity. The LRE experienced several issues and increased costs over that period of time. By the end of 2017, the LRE had zeroed out its ISF due to a combination of factors. Because of these issues, the Department of Human Services issued an intent to cancel its PHP contract with the LRE unless certain conditions were met. The LRE has met all the conditions except the requirement to have an ISF established for fiscal year 2018 at an estimated $2 million to $3.56 million. The county believes providing these necessary services to local providers is in the best interest of its citizens, and therefore, participation in the agreement is warranted. The agreement provides for a commitment of funds by 14 parties, known collectively as the participating community stakeholders, to provide auxiliary funding to the ISF should it be needed. LRE may request from the PCS, the participating community stakeholders, a draw on the funding commitment to the extent there is remaining 2018 operating deficit at the end of fiscal year 2018. The draws will be proportional to the original commitment and made no later than May 1, 2019. The LRE shall repay contributions to each participating community stakeholder from all qualified revenues it receives as soon as these funds become available until the full amount of the contribution have been repaid. Corporate counsel has reviewed the agreement and approved it as to form.
Okay, is there a motion to approve? Is it moved and supported? Questions, comments, and discussion? And we'll start with Commissioner Voorhees.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have several concerns and questions, especially regarding Article II, the Auxiliary ISF Fund. And in the resolution as read, bullet point number seven, next to the last, says that the LRE shall, I think the word says "shall" repay contribution to each PCS from all qualified revenues in it. But if you go to the contract, Article II, no, let's go to Article III, and the second II, each participating community stakeholder understands that there is no absolute guarantee that the funding and payment arrangements contemplated in this agreement will result in a complete payback and return of the contribution to the participating community. That's a conflict to me. If the resolution were passed, says we're going to guarantee the money back, but the articles of the incorporation said, no, they better expect that you may not. I can't vote for something like that.
Okay. Linda?
Commissioner, the contract requires that the LRE use all available funds to pay us back, so they are obligated to use those funds.
Available funds, but...
Correct. And I understand your distinction there. The intent of the agreement as drafted was to compel the LRE to use all of their available funds, including funds that come in. There is a fund that comes in after the, at the close of the fiscal year, based on their performance. And Commissioner Steck has been completely involved in these negotiations, so I think he can probably shed a little bit more on the details of it. But the idea is to compel them to use all of their available funds to repay us.
Commissioner Steck, would you like to add some comments on that?
Sure, thank you. Good morning. So the qualification of the ability to go ahead and make a draw is first conditioned on whether or not the state concurs that the integrated bonus may be used for purposes of paying back participants. The state has agreed to do that with respect to 2018, and by the way, is now tentatively agreeing to do that with respect to 2019. The qualified revenue, which is a defined term under this proposed agreement, is intended to, and by definition includes, the full amount of that bonus fund, and to the extent that there is a capitated rate component, that is, the primary payments from the state through the system. To the extent that there is a component of that capitated rate that includes a payment for the internal service fund system, that too would be a qualified revenue. Those are the two components of payments from the state that they concur may be used to pay back participants. We have tentatively capped the amount of the contribution at $2 million, because that is the current amount of the bonus that would be earned in 2018. So the way this is structured is those cash payments are, were qualified revenues, must be made available by the LRE to pay back the participants. The current amount of those is no, could be greater than $2 million, but approximately $2 million is the minimum amount. That must be paid back. So while we get $260 million, just so it's clear, we can't use the full $260 million. The state will not allow us to do that. But the funds that they will allow us to use, which is the $2 million, must be used for that, and that's the cap. So we're not going to see contributions that will exceed the available revenues from the state. That's the reason we balanced it off at $2 million. So the reason we put in the clause that says there's no absolute guarantee is because there is, in fact, a development that could occur in 2018 where that bonus amount does not rise to the level of $2 million. It could be less than $2 million. It's likely to be no less than 1.8, but it could be between 1.8 and 2. So it could be that it's going to take two years to get a full payment back. So in that sense, we're saying it's not absolutely guaranteed. The LRE, for that matter, the LRE could guarantee it, but if I was you, I wouldn't make a lot of weight on a guarantee from the LRE, simply because it's an entity that exists solely at the discretion of the state. So if the concern is to the extent that you contribute money, if there's a request, it will get paid back, it will get paid back because of the commitment to pay the revenue, and we don't take the draw unless the revenue is guaranteed. So it seems a little cyclical, but the point is that for it to actually be a draw, there has to be money there to begin with.
May I mention?
Go ahead.
So under Article II, contributions, each participating community stakeholder commits to contribute on a pro-rata basis. Now, is this an annual commitment of 1.5 million?
No, this is for fiscal year 2018 only. It's a one-time risk covering plan. The only issue we needed to address with the state was to provide a risk plan for 2018. 2019 and thereafter will be addressed in an entirely different way. So at the end of this fiscal year, if there is an operating deficit at the LRE, and there is a bonus entitlement, we may use this under this system. We may draw on this ISF up to the amount of $2 million, if that's the cap of the revenue, and use that to pay that deficit. But we may only use that, Commissioner, if in fact, there's $2 million in bonus contribution coming down the road. So if this works the way we would ideally like it, it will represent to the state we have the ISF there, but we'll never have to draw on it because we can take the bonus money immediately because of the timing and apply it instead of having to run it through the ISF. But if the timing doesn't allow that, what this says is we can draw it from the participants up to $2 million, and then pay them right back, probably a month or two later when that bonus money comes in.
Is there somewhere written in here that states this is only a one-year commitment? What do I put my hat on there?
There is a date in the document. I'm looking for the section, maybe Commissioner Steck has it, that says the end date as to when the draws must stop.
I think it's May of 2019, which is the wrap-up time for counting on fiscal year 18.
Right, May 1 of 2019.
Is there any way that we can amend the resolution that would remove that seventh bullet point that the LRE shall repay contributions? We're hoping they do, but that's different than "shall."
Well, I think the agreement is drafted that the LRE commits to make those payments back out of all qualified revenues.
My concern, if we take that out, is that then we don't have an official agreement that they shall, that they will. That's the concern that I have. I'm concerned like you, Commissioner. And we've been really arguing the point that we need guarantees. So I would suggest, highly suggest, that every time we can put in this document, whether this is in the contract or the action request resolution, that there's an indication that they will, that they shall, as opposed to they might, or if. That's my concern.
And we would prefer to have the "shall" in there.
Go ahead.
Stan, earlier in our discussions, I mentioned to you, I was concerned that Kent County's going to become the cash cow drawer for any, if it doesn't make it. And you mentioned, we'll put something in there to make sure that doesn't happen.
Yes.
Where would you say that is?
We added a clause that provides that where a county is a contributing participant, their participation will be no greater than that county's enrollees as a ratio of all regional enrollees. And that's in 2.2, near the bottom part of that.
Their percentage share.
Assuming that got in, Linda, that did get in the draft. The language is...
Pro-rata basis?
Any participating community stakeholder...
The very last sentence of 2.2.
Did we, if I may, did we get all seven counties giving a contribution in this?
No. No. As we talked last time, the process of identifying what is ultimately going to be the operating deficit is a combination, as usual, between spending and revenue. Some of the county participants have been very aggressive, particularly Allegen, in identifying spending reductions, to the point that it was our conclusion that while they could put $5,000 in, I suppose, and frankly, will if we pushed them to do that. But as far as participating significantly, they have done so by way of substantial reductions in their cost of operations. And it's anticipated that because of that, Allegen will actually be a break-even operating this year. We can't say that about Ottawa County, and we can't say that about Kent County. So they, the other participants, the other counties, you have Health West, which is Muskegon, and then West Michigan, which is the consortium of three counties. They are not contributing principally because they are identified as 298 pilots and have one foot into another funding mechanism.
Go ahead.
I was just going to say that you probably should clarify, when you say Kent County, you mean Network 180.
I'm sorry, Network 180, that's CMH for Kent County. So in response to your concern, Commissioner, we did try to cap it so that there's no way that whatever participation levels we experience, the county will not be contributing in a ratio greater than the ratio of our enrollees in this county compared to all enrollees in the entire region. So what is that? That's about 55% of the total enrollees in this region come out of Kent County. And if you look at the ratio allocations in 2.2, I think it is about 42% there. We've actually looked at some other hypotheticals, depending upon what Ottawa County ultimately does. If Ottawa County is no greater than 250,000, which is their commitment already, though we're negotiating with them another 500,000, we go up to about 47%. So even at that, we're still not greater than 52, or 53, or 55%. So we're still below the ratio. I'll also indicate that we just learned yesterday that the DeVos Foundation did make the commitment for the 250,000, and Pine Rest has taken theirs up to 100,000.
Okay.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Sure. Commissioner Bukowski's up next.
All right, thank you. Couple of questions. The list of participating community stakeholders, notwithstanding that you just stated that Pine Rest went up to $100,000, it sounds as if, though, or it looks, that, you know, for argument's sake, Pine Rest's still at 5,000, since it changes my math, it's 1.7% for those participating folks below the Doug DeVos Foundation? And how is that helpful as opposed to just creating an administrative burden that, you know, if we only, you know, so that you get a partial payment back, and then you prorate the funds back to all the participants, and we're just, or you're just repaying, you know, all those $5,000 contributors? So it doesn't seem like a lot of money from those folks? Was that a requirement that they're in there? Again, it just seems...
No. What we had offered to the providers is if you wish to participate, and there's no obligation for you to do so, but if you wish to participate, we suggest that your participation level be at 5,000, or if you want to talk about a greater contribution level, that's fine, we'll do that. And we did do that with some of them. But we put it at a minimum of five, because frankly, for that reason, thinking that below 5,000 is really not worth the administrative cost of processing it. So keep in mind that the mechanism here is if there is a draw at the end of the fiscal year and notification goes out, it'll identify how much of that $2 million we are asking be deposited. Before that, there's no transfer of cash. It stays in the participants' accounts. And if there's a request at the $2 million, we would ask those participants to write a check for $5,000 that would be deposited into the LRE ISF account. And then when the bonus is received shortly thereafter, another $5,000 check should theory come out of LRE and go back to them. So the question is, is that really enough to make it worthwhile for them to participate? Well, yeah, I mean, part of the reason for this is to demonstrate to the state the breadth of this community's support for a public behavioral health system. And that in order to accomplish that, we wanted to convince them that not only our major participants in the community, not only our CMHs and the counties involved, but our provider network also has a significant commitment to this system. So we frankly did not push it real hard after we got into the $3 to $4 million range, because we're over the $2 million cap anyway. If we needed to, we probably could go back and come up with more.
All right, thank you. And then probably a question for Wayman or Steve. To say that half of our commitment is from lapsed funds, I didn't know lapsed funds were real, in the sense that according to our budget, it's a number that says we anticipate we're not going to spend $6.5 million, so that's why it's there. And now we're going to spend, we're going to commit $750,000 of not-spent money that has actually been overspent. So I mean, without going to a whiteboard to help my confusion, but is this real money?
It is, in the sense that there's a history related to the lapse that shows that each year, there is an ability of the county to manage its expenses and balance. With also the addition of the local community stabilization share revenue, which is the monies that we receive from the treasury, resulting from the 2014 change with PPT, the personal property tax, we have been receiving more than what we had anticipated. We have been guarding against assuming that we're going to receive all those funds. At some point, the state may cancel that ability for us to receive those LC, the local community stabilization revenue. So we have been hedging against that. It appears this year, we're going to be receiving more than what we had anticipated. So Steve wants to come up and explain more the intricate... So if Steve wants to come up and explain more the intricacies of the, our cash flow, he can come up, but that's the best that I can share with you now. We feel very comfortable, we will not have a deficit, deficit position at the end of the year if we move to set aside these dollars. The hope is that we won't have to pay, we won't have to fund any of this because as it looks, they're going to receive the incentive bonus this year, and it looks like there's an incentive bonus for 2019, the, the 2 million that he talks about. It's pretty, it's pretty much, I would say 99% sure that they're going to have 2 million dollars in the bank to pay us back. So we're betting on the fact we will not have to pull any of those dollars out of reserve, out of our lapse, or, that's, that's how we've come to that conclusion, so.
All right, Commissioner Antor, you are up next.
Sorry, me?
All right, Commissioner Morgan.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I, I look at that lapse as like depreciation expense, it's kind of there, but it's not funded dollar for dollar. Bottom line, I think it's still, we have to put some money out of our fund balance to make this happen. I think this is a pretty complex issue. I think it's probably the best deal we're going to get.
I think it is, and frankly, if the county's unable to do this, I would predict that within 30 days, the state would pull that contract and the system would be down.
Can you explain what you mean by the system will be down?
I thought, wait a minute, I didn't hear that.
I was just going to say that we cannot get the state to bend, to do what we feel that they should do without taking them to court to sue them. And then when you do that.
We've been down that road before with.
All bets will be off.
No, I, I just want to, it doesn't matter exactly to me what line item it comes out of, it, it's the fund balance, so it's going to be supporting this, and hopefully we won't have to access that if things work out the way that we plan. However, dealing with the state, there's no guarantee that, of that, but.
Yeah, that's an environment that changes every day.
Okay, Commissioner Melton, you're up next.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So, all right, I'm, I, little bits and pieces that I have been writing down on my own before here, and now you're asking questions. Lapsed funds versus fund balance, are they the same thing?
No.
Okay.
Not quite.
Can someone identify the difference? Because we do have fund balance, and we know that exists, so that's not, as David Bukowski says, not real money. Could we just call it fund balance money instead of lapsed balance?
No.
No. Okay. Why? Please.
Steve, you want to come up and explain the two? Steve Duarte?
And then.
He's my, he's my.
Piggyback that, if this doesn't pass.
It gets a little complicated, and I want to make sure.
We'll do the, we'll do the second question. Let's get the first question answered. Go ahead, Steve.
I may have been wrong on that answer, but let me, let me have him clarify.
I think the question is, what's the difference between the fund balance and the lapse?
Well, fund balance is part of your balance sheet, and is on your, your CAF as that. The lapse funds are an anticipation that you will not spend as much as you've appropriated during the year, okay? So if you've appropriated 100 million dollars, you're expecting to spend less than that because of vacancies and positions and stuff like that. So we anticipate that as close as we can each and every year so that we can get through this.
Okay, and now I'm just going to use the Melton balance, if you will, and we project we're going to spend this much, and it's not really very uncommon that because of a curve ball thrown at us, our balances go this way. So possibly if we don't use lapse funds because there aren't any, then it will be fund balanced? Am I, am I way off base here, or am I sort of in the right direction?
Yeah. If, if lapse is yet less than what we predicted, you will be using fund balance.
Okay.
Okay?
Okay.
If it is more, then you'll be adding to fund balance.
Okay.
Okay? The idea is that to get that as close as we can so that we know that we're going to have a balanced budget.
So in my own more simplistic budget mind, would it make more sense just to say we are going to dip into our fund balance for this and not worry about the lapse funds? But if we have lapse funds, use them? Because then we're really more open to the community knowing where the money's coming from as opposed to we're saying, we're hoping we're going to have some money at the end, but we might not, so then we're going to go into this? Sounds a little iffy to me. Maybe I'm wrong.
This is also one of those questions that traditionally, even when we adopt in the initial budget, we have not wanted to appropriate fund balance. We've wanted to try and get it as close as we can without using fund balance. You absolutely could go to that, it's just been an aversion to doing that, and I believe we're okay with not doing that.
And yet we have a fund balance for a reason, correct? For, for emergencies?
For cash flow issues, for emergency, yes.
Okay, and this, so that was my second question then. Stan, what happens if we do not pass this to the LRE? You, you made that statement, and I didn't know what that meant.
Well, this is a.
In 30 days, something happens.
This is a component of the negotiations that we've had with the State Department for months now in trying to address their demand that the, the system have a reserve, a reserve, a risk reserve component. As was indicated in the introduction, the existing risk reserves have been completely exhausted. So if there is no risk reserve program or package that we can present to the state, that will be a non-compliant condition, at which point I predict they will again terminate the contract with the PIHP. If that's terminated, then the entire funding system that we use here will be changed to something, I'm not sure what, they have not disclosed what it would be. We believe it would be a recontract with a private health insurance plan. And so what we believe is at risk here is, at a minimum, the entire public component of the funding mechanisms that we currently have. So I can't say that definitively, but.
No, I understand.
I, I'm pretty convinced that if we can't do this, we have exhausted all other available strategies, so they'd likely pull it.
I, I trust you to say that, so thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Hennessy.
Commissioner Stack, thank you for all of your work. To stay on top of this, to understand it, and, and today's action will, will just be one, you know, one part of what you've had to do to comply and to meet the state requirements. And as I understand it, this would be the last bit that we would need to do to meet at this point, as of today.
The last one at this point. It's a changing environment, suggested every day. In fact, the group is meeting with Nick Lyons this hap, well, in about.
This morning at 11 o'clock.
An hour or so. So, and it is to, again, explore with him, what is the next step? Where is the system going? And how is what we're doing here create alternative ways for the state to do it? As we've said before, next year is not implicated. We don't intend to use this system next year because we are looking at a, a new contracting structure with a new MCE. That will be probably directed by this Thursday. We'll identify that entity, and so that will be a new entity to step in, contract with the LRE. That entity is being asked to provide the funding mechanism going forward. So we don't need an ISF funded, we may not need an ISF funded starting in 2019 going forward. But we'll see.
Hey, Commissioner Voorhees?
If I may, one for.
This is your second one?
It's a third.
That's all right.
For, for each of them, one question. Stan, above all, many times I've expressed my appreciation for your work in this. And I, I still, at this point, I am a no vote on this, and there's still some questions in here that I don't think we have a, a defined enough description of what's going to happen. And then, if I could, to Steve. Steve, have we ever used the lapse money to, to meet an obligation?
Yes, because you do it indirectly. I mean, once you set lapse, you don't know what that number's going to be in its entirety, so it can be higher or lower. If you in fact are lower, you've used lapse funds to, to.
Lapse funds could be considered general fund money just to be used, correct?
Yeah, yes.
As we need it.
The bottom line, you close this all out to general, to, to fund balance at the end, okay? Whether we call it, you know, appropriation of fund balance, or we call it the lapse funds, when you're all done, it all closes, the general fund washes out. Let's face it, the only thing you can pay anything with is cash, okay? All this other stuff is budgetary estimate. The bottom line is, if we spend a million and a half cash now, and if for some reason we want to get paid back, got to be a reduction of fund balance regardless of what we call it at this point. I mean, it's, it's, you can buy guns or butter, I've said that several times. In this case, you'll, you'll make a choice, and if that happens, then it'll be subtracted from.
But if there's a need out there, that is just as good as a fund balance.
Excuse me?
If there's a need in the community, that dollars are, is just as available as the fund balance.
Yes, sir, if you want to do it that way.
Thank you.
Commissioner Morgan.
Last one.
Sure. Promise?
Yes, because I'm not talking a lot this morning, but seems to me that this is just a line item that's available to withdraw these funds. So from an accounting standpoint.
Yeah.
And to keep current with all the accounting standards, this is a line item that we can take these funds, funds from and stay in balance.
And stay in balance and not any harm to our plan at this time.
And, and the bottom line, it's all taxpayer dollars, regardless of what you call it.
It is.
Right. This is all taxpayer dollars regardless of what name you want to put on it.
The bottom line, I'm going to say right here is, I do not believe that this will put us in a deficit position, or I wouldn't have recommended it. That's the bottom.
Yep. And, and whether it's Commissioner Morgan or any commissioner, we will talk this through. I think it's really important to have all topics talked through thoroughly, and I, we will keep the discussion going until we get questions answered and comments made across the board. All right, Commissioner Melton.
My question is, and I, again, I'm, I'm, I know I'm between lapse and fund balance. It's just, to me, for, for being open with, with our constituents, and I think it's going to be a lot easier for someone to understand a fund balance as opposed to a lapse balance. Would it make any sense, or could I, is it even possible, Linda, to amend that instead of calling it a budget lapse, that we just say fund balance?
It, it is technically possible to do that, but I would, I'd be interested in what Steve has to say so that we meet all of our accounting standards on how these terms play into those standards to make sure we don't accidentally create another hiccup for us or for Steve within the accounting system.
Okay, and I understand that, but I mean, we have a fund balance for a reason. Since I've been here, I don't know that we've ever tapped into it. It exists for an emergency. It would be nice to, to call it what it is, or have we.
We, we've tapped into the fund balance because we have to carry the taxes that the Governor Granholm administration passed the tax shift, so we have to draw down on that fund balance until September. So we've tapped into it. And I got to tell you, I'm going with Duarte on this.
Okay.
Yep.
Maybe it's not important to know. I just think lapse is difficult for a common person to understand. It would be more recognizable to call it fund balance, in my opinion.
Just said, again, a little bit different way. I do not expect that we will be drawing down on fund balance.
Okay.
Okay? That's the message. I believe that when I close the book, fund balance will actually go up this year, not down.
Okay.
In spite of this million and a half, and that's why I didn't recommend taking that from fund.
Can I also make just one more comment, final comment on this? Lapse is a term that we are expected to use as we communicate with our state treasury about our, our budget. So it's a term that they expect us to use, and we got to use it carefully. So I think that we have to understand that Steve's experienced over 30 years, maybe 40. I, I trust that terminology being used is a safe place for us as we try to conduct our business and our relationship with the state of Michigan.
Okay.
All right, Stan, why don't I have you come up for just a few, few more minutes on this? Because the bottom line of this, if this doesn't pass, there is a significant risk of interruption of mental health services to the Kent County residents. Is that statement accurate?
If this does not pass, as you can see, it's about 42 to 47% of the overall package, and it is my judgment that that, even if everyone else participated at the levels indicated, it would be an insufficient number for the state to accept it and would determine that the plan is unacceptable. If they determine the plan is unacceptable, then they have backed themselves into a position where they would have to pull the contract.
Which means an interruption to services potentially to the Kent County residents in this area.
In our judgment, that would mean an interruption in the service, certainly an interruption in the cash flow, the funding mechanism, and it could put some providers at serious risk. Maybe they wouldn't even survive. And if providers are unable to provide services, then clearly consumers will not be served. Yep. Yes.
Okay. Anyone else? All right, with that being said, we'll do a, can we do a roll call vote, please? Commissioner Hennessy? Yes. Commissioner Antor?
Yes.
Commissioner Breevy?
Yes.
Commissioner Bukowski?
Yes.
Commissioner Mast?
Yes.
Commissioner Melton?
Yes.
Commissioner Morgan?
Yes.
Commissioner Voorhees?
No.
Chair Jones?
Yes.
Motion passes. And we will go on to item number four, request for early childhood millage. Wayman?
Yes, this is a request to authorize placement of a proposition on the November 6, 2018 general election ballot for a dedicated millage for the provision of community-based early childhood development services for children up to age five and expected parents. The Millage Subcommittee recommends to the Board of Commissioners that a dedicated millage in the amount of .25 mils and for a duration of six years, 2018 to 2024, appear on the general election ballot this November with the stipulation that the funds be administered with the same model as currently used for the senior millage and with independent oversight and measuring of performance regularly reported to the county. A 2017 analysis of gap in services, gaps in services and funding completed by First Steps Kent found a funding gap in prevention and early intervention services, which means that more than half of children eligible for services addressing early childhood development are not receiving these services. Community partners have identified evidence-based comprehensive services and supports that improve kindergarten readiness. The median home value in Kent County is approximately $181,000 with a median taxable value of $100,000. The median cost to Kent County taxpayers would be approximately $50 per year. The request was reviewed by administrative staff to ensure compliance with the Board's millage request policy and state statute. The request was also reviewed and recommended to be placed on the November 2018 general election ballot by the Millage Subcommittee. Commissioners Stan Stack, Emily Breevy, Harold Mast, and Phil Skaggs.
Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Use their support? Okay, moved and supported. Now we will open up for questions, comments, and discussion, and Commissioner Antor.
Thank you, Chair. Appreciate the latitude on this, it's going to get a little lengthy, but first of all, I'd like to thank all the people that served on the Subcommittee. I know it's a lot of work, and I sure have a lot of respect and appreciation for many of your members that I know. And I called Lou Chamberlain yesterday and told him I was going to be voting no, and we had a nice discussion, very civil. But in my area that I represent, we are suffering some major millage fatigue, and these folks keep saying, how do these countywide initiatives keep getting passed? And I, I can't explain it. I, I think we've reached a point where we have so many people with no skin in the game that are able to vote on these initiatives that don't pay property taxes. And I was doing, trying to do the maths to give you an example, but I, I ran out of time and information, but I think that's part of the problem. My daughter just gave birth to a baby a month ago. Grayson Thomas was brought into this world, very proud grandfather, and at the hospital, she was given, she had to sign off all these documents, the things that she was required to do. She, she was required before she could leave to have an appointment with a pediatrician set up, they wouldn't let her leave without it. I've got after visit summary, a couple different forms of that. After newborn screening, your baby's blood spots, breastfeeding the first 24 hours, bed now, breastfeeding support, understanding your mood changes before and after. Bed now, breastfeeding support, understanding your mood changes before and after childbirth, breastfeeding services. We've got comforting, you're crying newborn. There's just a wealth of information on how to deal with your baby after it's born. Help me sleep safely, healthier communities was quite a document. After newborn screenings, Michigan newborn screening. Bed now, breastfeeding support, more breastfeeding services. Circumcision, which is my favorite information. Postpartum depression, and on and on and on. Plus, it's followed up at the very end with the parent pack, the parental pack, which has all the information that a person needs, not only after birth, but then for the next few years. This information is readily out there. My daughter continually gets emails, if not texts, about, make sure you're gonna be at the next appointment. Immunizations are very important. She can hardly get through a day without being told what she needs to do next. Besides that, let's say all the numbers are right, and there is a need here, which I'm not convinced of yet, but I think there's some really good people that have their heart in the right places. I wanted to talk a little bit, because we just gotten on talking about funding for something, two millions here, three million there. And we are all so concerned about spending taxpayer dollars wisely. I wanted to point out, because this is an educational component, we currently give our state colleges 1.75 billion, with a B, dollars to be used however they want. I can cite MSU, Wayne State, and U of M alone get over $1 billion, okay? Now, that money goes into their general fund. And what's crazy about that is the University of Michigan, sorry, Wayman, plug your ears, Dan, you might want to plug your ears. They're sitting on over $10 billion of endowment money. That's untaxed. There's no requirements for that. They can do whatever they want for it. How are they able to build up $10 million? Because we're giving them over $300 million every year, every single year, of taxpayer dollars. Michigan State University got $330 million last year. They continue to get that. A lot of that money goes, all of it goes to general fund. And what are we doing with it this year? We're probably using a great deal of that to pay off Larry Nassar victims, okay? It'll be used for whatever they want. Wayne State University gets over $300 billion or a million dollars. They graduate one-third of their students. So, two-thirds of their students don't graduate. What do we tell them? Great job. We're gonna give you another 300 million bucks. Same thing with all these colleges. That money is education money that's being absolutely misappropriated and misused. And it's like the Holy Grail that we can't touch. I've talked to my legislators, and they said, well, we got a constitutional requirement to fund these colleges. I said, but for how much? They can't answer that question. That $10 billion of endowment money, why in the world are we providing another $3 million every year to U of M? Makes no sense. If they got 3% back on that, that's $300 million they get just in interest without touching the principal. So, with all due respect, I think the money's out there, and I think the state needs to figure out a way to tap into that money. Because if anybody can explain why we're giving these colleges all this money, I'd love to hear it. Supposed to be to keep tuition rates down. That's what it's geared for. Two-thirds of the students at Wayne State, they're not even graduating. But I'm sure they got a lot of debt. And there's kids that are going to college, they're leaving with a lifetime full of debt. They're either underemployed or unemployed. Very small percentage are actually getting a job in their creative field. And yet, we keep throwing money at this broken system. I would love for this to be funded with some of that money and not go back to the voters again, because the voters are, they've told me enough is enough. And it's just tough for me to square this in my mind when we're giving all this money away every single year, regardless of outcomes. Regardless of outcomes. So, one other thing I'd like to mention. My nephew, James, was a Cedar Springs student. And he was told by, I guess he went through a screening process, that he was a problem child, he didn't have the aptitude. They wanted to put him in a special class and give him some pills for ADHD. His mother was so upset, said, there's nothing wrong with my son. She took him out of that school, put him in a different school, where that kid thrived. He ended up going back to Cedar Springs High School, and he ended up being crowned the king, football star, did great, 3.8 grade point average, and he's now works for Steelcase in customer relations, flying all over the country. But they wanted to stick him in a special class because of a screening. So, I'm a little bit concerned about these screenings, taking that part of the equation out of the parents' hands and letting the state dictate who's gonna be. And I know there's, they probably don't agree with some of the stuff. And I just had to, I had to say this, because this is reality. These numbers, this 1.75 billion dollars that were currently given to state colleges, to me is a waste of money. We gotta fix that. And so, I'm gonna vote no based on this, because I think the money's out there, and we gotta figure out the way for the state to reappropriate. I realize it's a constitutional requirement to give colleges money, okay? It's up to discretion about how much we give them every year, though. That's up to the legislators. For some reason, this is the Holy Grail. Nobody wants to touch it. If I was in Lansing, I'd be, this would be my issue, so thank you very much.
Commissioner Voorhees?
Thank you, Sheriff. I appreciate you. I'm not sure to whom I should address my question, but it has to do with bullet point number two in the request here. It says, "A 2017 analysis of gaps in services and funding completed by First Steps Kent found a funding gap." I'm wondering what kind of dollars are we talking in this funding gap? Because we found out we have fund balance, and we have lapse balance, and we have dollars, maybe there's other ways of meeting these needs. But what dollar amount are we talking about in a funding gap?
Come on up, Matthew.
And if, Matthew, you need assistance from either committee members or someone from First Steps, I would ask that they help you with that.
Yeah, I would actually like to have the author of the document, Anna Marie and Amy Turner, come up and answer that question specifically. Just that question about what that funding gap is.
Is your question?
Good morning.
Good morning. Thank you very much. Is the question, the numbers in the fund balance, how we deter, or the fund gap, excuse me, how we determine the funding gap, what?
Yeah, I'm talking dollars. What kind of dollars are needed to complete so that we can say that our services are 100% being met?
So, I think everybody's gotten a copy of this gap analysis. Is that correct? Has everyone seen that?
Maybe, maybe not, but no, let's go ahead.
Okay.
We got it.
So, when we did this, we looked at, we have a community plan that has been developed over the course of 20 years. And we've really been sticking to the same community plan that says, that sort of paints the ideal. If we had everything that we wanted in the community that we know based on research will make a difference for children and families, this is what we would have. And then we compared where we are right now with that realistic ideal. It's not, we called it a realistic ideal because we know not all families want services, not all families need services, and that not all families will choose to participate. And so, we took what we consider a realistic ideal compared to where we are now for the entire spectrum of services that impacts children zero to five. So, not just those things that are included in the millage. For that, the funding gap is about $90 million a year.
Thank you.
But what we included in the millage does not include several of those things. That includes preschool for three-year-olds. We're pretty close to having preschool available to all four-year-olds. The state increased funding significantly several years ago. Governor Snyder really pushed for that, to increase preschool funding for four-year-olds. Right now, the state has set a goal of having preschool available to all three-year-olds by 2025. So, we did not include preschool in this. We think there's a state solution to that. We also did not include childcare in this, which is a huge portion of the gap, because the state and many local business groups are working collaboratively to try and develop some solutions to childcare. So, we think there is very potentially a state solution to that as well.
All right.
Does that answer the question?
Commissioner Voorhees, are you good on that?
I've got my number, 90 million.
All right.
Thank you.
Any other questions, Commissioner Voorhees?
No, not at this time, please.
We'll go to Commissioner Melton?
Thank you, Sheriff. I, first of all, want to, just, I guess I want to say, I have read the entire 169 pages of the report, by the way. I've also read the 100 and however many other reports that I put before all of you, just little, the ones that I thought were key points, so all of the commissioners have them, of the call to action plan that our Governor Snyder asked a commission group to look into. It's called the 21st Century, I don't have it here in front of me right now, but you all do, whatever it's called, to look into 21st Century Education Commission of February 28, 2017. I also gave you a copy of all the commission members on that one, and then also the commission members on the First Steps. So, having started with all of that, I think we can all definitely say that by looking at the makeup of the sponsors of our community program, this is definitely not a partisan issue. It is an investment in our future, the future of our children, and the economic future of our community. We find that in Governor Snyder's, what they found, on page 75, Michigan is only one of three states that has seen a decline in fourth grade reading since 2003. This is worse for persons of color, special ed, and poverty. And also on that same page, and this just breaks my heart, black fourth grade readers in Michigan tested the worst in reading in the entire United States. Not acceptable. As commissioners of Kent County, we are charged with being good stewards, or at least the best stewards that we can be with our constituents' tax dollars. Also, on page 96 of Snyder's commission, we see that the investment, and so as an investment advisor, would you not want to steer your clients toward an estimated increased investment gain of 200 to 1,700%? I think that's a pretty good return for our money, personally. But we're not being asked to pass this millage, or even to sell it to our constituents, although we are a little bit. We're asking them to give a dollar a week, possibly, to let this group of respected bipartisan community leaders and educators the opportunity to present this program to our voters, and let our voters decide. They've already said in their research, which is on page 13 of their documents, that in their straw poll, they found that 71% initially went down to 69% after conversation, that they were very much in favor of this. I have talked to several educators, I, I'll say 71, I'm close. Not a one of them was anything but 100% for .5 mils being asked on the ballot in November, which I know is not what's on the table yet, to let this go through. I went one step further. My daughter teaches ECSE. For those who don't know what that means, she teaches early childhood special education, three- and four-year-olds, who are already in the special education system by that early age. It costs the state in Kent County, the state gives most of the schools here around $7,000 a year. I rounded it up, down, and between. For a special education, it costs anywhere between three and four times that. So, I did my math, and she sent out this email. And she said in her email, "Do you feel that at least one or two, or possibly more of your students receiving special education services in your program would not need the same program services if they had a different growing-up life or upbringing, i.e., were taught more structure, more stimulation, more safety, more consistency nurturing, parent involvement, et cetera?" She received a call back from all but three of her coworkers. There are only nine special education teachers at Hamilton. And every one of them, yes. Yes, I have two in mind. Yes, I have several in mind. Not this year, but last year, almost my whole class, i.e. eight students. Even if a child's diagnosis doesn't always change, I think the severity can often be taken care of at an earlier age before they would come to my classroom. These are all teachers either with their teaching degree or working on their masters. One this morning wrote at 7:00 a.m. so that she could be part of this. "Good morning, everyone. I think everyone knows that the classroom that someone else had last year, we had this year, and our classroom consisted of almost all students who, if raised from birth in a different setting, or a setting that had help, would probably not need any of the same programming services." So, I put that into dollars and cents just so that you can understand. The responses came back. There were two of them, one of them that said a few. Okay, I'm using three as a few. You can decide if that's right or wrong. At special ed prices, that's $75,000. There were two that came back at several. Several could be five, four on up. I chose five. That's $125,000. One teacher said two. That's $50,000. The one that spoke, or wrote in this morning, she has eight students in her classroom. At $25,000 each, that's $200,000. Let's take this one little teeny school, nine teachers, and we are at $450,000 to educate these three- and four-year-olds as opposed to $126,000 if we were using just the dollars from our state. That's a huge difference. And in my opinion, it is well worth the investment for us as commissioners to allow our voters to decide whether or not they would like to see their children entering kindergarten on an even playing field. Because you know what? They're all going to be in the future together. And I think we cannot continue to be shortsighted and underfunding. When we invest in a priceless work of art, we don't buy half the art. We buy the whole painting. And if we buy a house, we try not to skimp on the foundation. If you had your choice of putting your house on a rock and a solid foundation or quicksand, I really think everyone in this room would choose the rock and the solid foundation as opposed to the quicksand. We are bringing students who have been raised in quicksand up to kindergarten, and they are asked to perform the same as those who are coming from a house built on rock. And I have more to say, but I will end with this, and that is, there's a wonderful parable in the most read book in the world. And it's about a master who gives three of his servants a talent. It seems to me that in lieu of the data provided by First Steps, and they have done a lot of work, if you took the time to read every page of their report. On page 33, as I said before, they stated that 69% of the persons polled favored this proposal. If we commissioners choose not to support this millage going to our voters, we will be no different than the servant who hid his talent under the rock, which of course produced, as we know, nothing more than the one talent.
Commissioner Bocowski?
Thank you, Sheriff. I too want to echo the thanks to the Millage Subcommittee for your work and to the citizens group that brought this forward. As is my practice, I have too many disclosures to make, but this one doesn't rise to the level of a conflict of interest. Commissioner Melton passed out the list of First Step folks. And I should note that many of the people on that list have been donors to disability advocates, starting with Mr. Doug DeVos, the Sekias, the He Cox, the Jandranawas, and Kate Walters. So, just that being said, with that being said, no one has ever asked me, no one has ever asked me to support the early childhood millage. And no one has ever asked me to support it at any particular amount. And that could be odd, because I've been hanging out with Candace and Anna Marie since she came to town, and her predecessor before that, for I think six to eight years, talking about an early childhood millage. So, why didn't these folks ask me? Because I've been a commissioner at least for five and a half years. And that's because I've always offered my support. This is one of those things that I believe is the right investment for our community to make. Now, the sheriff just left, and I'm gonna quote him. And I don't know if this is still his opinion on the matter, but about five years ago, there was a legislative breakfast at United Way, and the sheriff said, "This is the kind of stuff our community needs to invest in." And he immediately followed it up with, "Don't take the money from me, though." Okay? He said, "This will save money, but you can't take it from me today to save money 20 years from now." So, Commissioner Antor, again, let's go to Lansing. I got a whole list of bureaucracies that need reform. Let's go together, not any day, I'll. that need reform, let's go together, not any day, I'll make my calendar work, but let's go. But we can't stop this proposal from moving forward because of that. As I noted, I've worked with these folks in the community, as a United Way agency, a partner agency, so I know the committee and the staff behind this as friends and collaborators. So I do trust their hard work in this proposal, and I know it's extremely hard work in putting this together. And this really is about planting trees. The kid, your grandson?
Nephew.
Nephew. Your nephew, he's 21 years from being 21, you know? We're not going to see the true outcome until that happens, just like the tree I planted over on Forest Street a month ago, you know, that we need to plant trees, if we want trees. I love trees, I even love children, and I love children, my own and all of ours. Because my youngest is 18, he's way past 0 to 5, so this isn't going to necessarily help me, but nieces and nephews, and maybe one day, hopefully long in the future, I'll be a grandparent and my grandchildren can impact this. On another personal level, in 1995, my wife actually helped put together the early-on team in Kent County when she worked at a place called the Child Guidance Clinic, doesn't exist anymore because it's part of Arbor Circle. So I know firsthand that people get all of those documents when a child is born, and all of those documents get put in a box somewhere, or recycled, or whatever, because when you're looking at that 0 to 5-year-old, you don't think to do research, no matter how close your smartphone is. And so I know from that, evidence from my wife and the data given to us, that those home visits are truly evidence-based, and this is planting those trees for our future that we have to do as a community. Again, 100% want to advocate for Lansing for more dollars. I hesitate to go to the federal government because it's bankrupt, so I think we need to focus on Lansing and those resources. So, again, totally support the proposal. You know, being a Monday morning quarterback, my only change would be some direct dollars for advocacy at a policy level, but maybe we can find those at another time, and we can do that on our spare time, some advocacy to our state legislators. However, again, this proposal's solid, and comes with that group of citizens, as our Millage Review Committee, or Millage Policy requires, and as the Review Committee found. So, all of that being said, eventually, I would like to make a motion to amend the proposal, but I don't know if we want to go once around the table first. So that's, the chair's prerogative.
Go ahead and, yeah, go ahead and make it.
Okay, well, I would like to make a motion to amend the proposal as it was presented, instead of the .5 mills.
.25?
.25, what did I say?
.5.
Oh, sorry. .25 is proposed. I would like to amend this to read .35 mills.
I second that motion.
Okay. We have a motion that was moved and supported as an amendment, so at this point, we have discussion on it?
Discussion on the amendment.
Discussion on the amendment only. So now we're going to move our discussion to the amendment, we'll get back to the original list after we have this discussion on the amendment.
Can I make one comment about my amendment?
Sure.
I mean, quickly to say again that this proposal was presented as .5, because working with this committee group, again, knowing these folks for many years, it was a much higher number they started with. As was noted, there's an 80 to 90 million dollar gap in this area, so at .5, or .5 would raise plus or minus 10 million, and .25 would only be 5 million. I say only, that's still a lot of money, and we're going to watch it very closely as we do, like we do with senior millage and others. However, the .35 gets us to a better place, the committee has said that that is a better number to be at for bringing these services to scale. So that's why I'm going to .35 as opposed to going to the whole .5.
And just a quick administrative note before we continue to discuss this, there was a change to the original resolution in the packet, so I just want to make sure everybody knows that we're talking about that. There was an additional paragraph, right, Linda?
It's just a change out of the second, we're asked to mimic the first bullet point on the AR, but right now, we're only talking about the amendment.
Right, we're only talking about the amendment, but the amendment would be to this.
To change it up to .35.
Well, first things first.
Right, but it's, but this is already in, so it would be this piece of paper that would potentially change.
Correct.
This one, not the one in the packet.
That's why we're calling it amendment.
Right, okay. Commissioner Morgan?
I'd like to at least acknowledge the work of the committee. I think there was some due diligence, I really appreciate the fact that Kent County really strives with their due diligence, and really tries to research. They came with a recommendation of .25. I'm still a firm believer this belongs at the Kent County ISD, so I'm a little bit conflicted in saying, we have a recommendation coming out of the committee, and everybody's applauding the committee's work, but they want to change the recommendation, so I'm a little bit confused on that. But I just would like to remind the commissioners, the recommendation was for .25 coming out of the committee.
Okay. Commissioner Hennessy's next.
I would appreciate it. I know, I attended a couple of the later meetings of the Village Subcommittee, and there was discussion over, you know, whether it be .25 or higher, and the final decision was not unanimous, but I would appreciate a little bit of explanation. You know, how did it come about to be the .25 as opposed to the .35, or a .4, or the .5?
Stan, why don't we have you come up, please?
Good morning again. So, the question, as I understand it, is how did the Subcommittee land on a .25? Well, as you pointed out, the ultimate vote on a .25 was a 3 to 1 vote. So you might say that to some extent, this represents a bit of a compromise as well, but I think that the general thinking that supported the .25 looked at a number of factors. First, just the overall level of the millage at .5, the thinking being that that is probably too high, at least in the majority, compared to where we have gone with other dedicated millages for these kinds of programs, such as the Senior Dedicated Millage. And to start out with, it would be more appropriate, the thinking was to go at a .25, allow that to be funded for a period of time, and to use that time to measure and document whether the taxpayer savings that we thought were compelling were in fact going to be realized in Kent County as these programs move forward. So that was one factor. The other factor, another factor was that, as we've talked about, there are other funding structures out there. The state has been identified, the federal government, the ISD, so these are all in play as well. And while the state has released a minimal amount of additional funds, the thinking being that we could see some changes in where the politics and the policies go in these other funding structures, to suggest that over the course of the next five years, the need to go at a .5 would be diminished because of that. And the third, I think, had to do with the anticipation that while, obviously, the committee concluded that this was a significant enough case to justify going to the voters, we already anticipate that there will be other compelling needs presented to us over the course of the next five years. And so we may need to balance our available funding from the taxpayers over the course of the next five years with some things such as environmental demands, behavioral health demands, suicide demands, opioid, and so on and so forth. So the overall analysis was a distillation of those kinds of factors, suggesting that at this point, we suggest and recommend going first at .25, measure it, look at it, determine its effectiveness, determine the extent of savings that we think it generates, or will generate to the taxpayers, and then, at the end of that period of time, if it supports its case, we anticipate there'd be a request to increase it.
Okay, does that answer your question, Commissioner Hennessy?
All right. Commissioner Melton?
Thank you. May I ask, Stan, when, I'm sorry, when the committee met, did you all, as a committee of the four of you, did you offer a vote on .35, or only at .25?
I believe at the last session, there was some deliberation as to whether or not it should go up from the .25, which had been tentatively agreed by the board, or by the committee. It was considered. I believe that the First Step folks did make that suggestion, that there was a sort of a efficiency issue, that you have a baseline of costs associated with this.
That they're better here.
I believe that one of the things that the committee did in response was to also confirm its belief that existing funding, because these are not programs that the county is not already in on, we already contribute funds out of our general fund to support some of these. So what we had concluded is, we would not support a reduction, that is, what we had done with the zoo, which was to trade off, if the Dedicated Millage was approved, there would be a reduction in some general fund contributions. We specifically expressed that we believe that that funding, though, should stay as it is.
Okay. And my, the reason I ask that question is, again, we're not the ones, as commissioners, making the dollar amount decision. All we are doing, or being asked to do as a group of commissioners, is to allow our constituents, if you will, the opportunity to vote on this. We're not making the bottom-line decision.
That is correct.
And the dollar amount.
No, it was our judgment that we are essentially serving as gatekeepers, as to making the first conclusion as to what really fits within the scope or the range of the best interests of the county, subject to the voter's decision on that, which included a discretion with respect to, do we recommend it is submitted at all, or not?
Commissioner? Excuse me, we do need to stick to the amendment that's on the floor, so the general questions on the overall proposal come after we're finished with the amendment.
Yep, so this is about changing it to .35.
Well, if I can then add some more research as to why I feel strongly that this is a good idea, there are 44,500 students that this group has identified as being possible receivers of this service in Kent County. And it has, the, all you have to do is Google into Siri and say, "Tell me about research for 0 through 5," and it just shoots off of your, I mean, there's so much, and why. And some of the reasons, the last two pages of their report is the Heckman Report, I believe that's what it's called, I didn't give you all a copy of that, but I have it here, and he says, "Professor Heckman's groundbreaking work with a consortium of economists, psychologists, statisticians, and neuroscientists shows that early childhood development directly influences economic health and social outcomes for individuals in society. Adverse early environments create deficits in skills and abilities that drive down productivity and increase social costs, thereby adding to financial deficits borne by the public." There's more on that, you can get it on the page, but at the very end, it says, "Investing in early childhood education is a cost-effective strategy even during a budget crisis." Why? Because it has been proven to decrease special education needs, decrease needs to go to the ER, decrease health problems, and decrease problems when they get further along in school. Information that is given to a newborn, or to a mom with a newborn, and I am a nurse, did all that? It's not taken in. And then you have someone who comes in, they don't speak the language.
Commissioner Melton, are you tying this into the .35?
Yes, I am. Because they can't take that information home with them. They don't understand it. Or they haven't had a parent that has taught them how to parent. What First Steps wants to do, if you read their report in entirety, they want to come aboard next to parents, and help the parents learn to parent. My kids are going to learn regardless of where they lived, because they had two parents who knew how to teach them, and were taught how to teach as parents. But we have 44,500 students, kids, who have been identified by this group, who I believe to be telling us the truth, who don't have those same resources. That's a lot of students in Kent County, a lot of children. I think that if the committee wanted .5 personally, that's what I would like to give them, but I think .35, they have identified that they can come down to that, and that, again, we are charged with doing the best we can in making good investment decisions for our constituents. And again, I can pass around all of these things that I have, I have books, I have, everything says that reaching our 0 to 3 and 4-year-olds is in the best interest of our community, our state, and our future, because our children are our future, and we are shortsighted if we forget that.
Okay, we are discussing the .35 amendment, is there any other comments or questions on that before we take a vote? Yes, Commissioner Hennessy?
I'm looking at the conclusion of the Subcommittee report, it's not in, directly referenced in either, you know, the resolutions, as they stand, either at .25 or .35. Where would it stand for voting for either one of this, this idea, that the county would, you know, if able, if future commissions approve it, to continue to provide the $730,000 that has been identified as part of our prevention initiation general funds? Where does that stand, whether you vote for the .25 or the .35?
Is that something that ties to the .35?
So the $700,000 that you're talking about, the board, each year has to appropriate those dollars related to prevention services and human services. So that's your prerogative. We are not handcuffing the board in any way with the proposal that's before you to do either or. So that's out of the...
That's out of the question, whether it's the .5 or the .35.
Yes. Correct.
Commissioner Antor?
Chair, I'd just like to ask if we could have a roll call, well, since this is going to be going on the ballot, I think it's important that we do a roll call, not only on this amendment, but also the item number four.
Okay.
Just to clarify, a yes vote would be supporting the amendment, a no vote would be not supporting the amendment.
Correct.
Okay.
Commissioner Melton, did you have something to add?
Well, I just, I was going to suggest that, and again, I can, I can't, the letter that Anne Marie Valdez wrote to the Subcommittee, suggesting that cutting back the areas where they really needed the funding, and how .35, .39 is what she said, could certainly work. I think it's very valid in taking into consideration, but I'm not finding it here, I don't want to waste your time. But it is in there, the committee did get it, and it pretty well stated, I thought, very clearly, the dollar amount was large in needing to get this started. Personally, at any time when we can give a group the full respect due to their research, I would like to do that, and I think that they have proven very, very well the great need for this to be at least at a .35 mill.
Linda, what's the estimated dollars raised if it goes to .35?
The last numbers I had was at .25, the total, subject to some capture from capture districts, the total raised would be about 5.7 million. At .35, it jumps to 7.98 million.
Okay.
But that is subject to the capture districts.
All right. Any other questions, comments, or discussion on the .35? All right, seeing... All right. Seeing none, we'll take a roll call vote. Pam, would you please do a roll call?
Commissioner Hennessy?
No.
Commissioner Antor?
No.
Commissioner Breevy?
No.
Commissioner Bukowski?
Yes.
Commissioner Mast?
No.
Commissioner Melton?
Yes.
Commissioner Morgan?
No.
Commissioner Voorhees?
No.
Chair Jones?
No. That does not pass. So we will not be discussing the change of the .25 to .35. We've done that, and it did not pass. So we will go back to discussing the resolution before us at .25. And Commissioner Breevy is up for comments and discussion on that.
Thank you, Chair. You know, I was honored to be part of the subcommittee, and I thought we had some really good discussion and presented with some great information. I do think, you know, the goal of the millage is to help kids and their parents, you know, kids ranging from zero to three, to prepare them. In our schools today, there's a lot tougher restrictions, and especially with the third grade reading. I think this is a good step in helping prepare kids for that. And I think, you know, between the constituents I talked to and other parents in the community, I had kind of mixed reviews and mixed thoughts on this millage opportunity. So I think, you know, being able to present it to the voters, to let them have the opportunity to decide, I think that's an important step. And, you know, that's one of the reasons why I'm supporting it today, to give them the opportunity.
Thank you. Yes, Commissioner Antor?
Take one more bite out of the apple here, real quick.
Go ahead.
I hear a lot about third grade reading. It is a problem, obviously. Kids can't read when they're in third grade. So there's a breakdown there somewhere. But I've also heard that argument made almost every time we have a millage anywhere is because of that. These school millages, they always bring up third grade reading levels, and yet we never fix it. And I also wanted to make one thing, with all due respect to these fine folks, so I knew their hearts are in the right place. Our state of Michigan, you know, the governor's paradise here, he's got $9.5 billion in his general fund. That's what they have to operate. $9.5 billion to run this entire state. And we have a state college that has more than that in just their endowment fund, just the endowment fund, not counting all the other revenues they're taking in. And yet, we feel a need to give them $300 million every single year. The system is broken. We need to capture that money, at least part of it. Put it on our legislators. Tell them how important this is. Because these state colleges, they're also coming back to the school districts and saying, "You guys got to do a better job." Because these kids coming out of here, we can't get them. Michigan concentrates on getting kids from out of state and out of the country. That's a big focus for them. And we need to do a lot better job. But we need to insist that some of that money comes back for initiatives like this, because the money is out there. And I'm telling you, it's being wasted, period. So we need to do a lot better job at the state level. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Bukowski?
Thank you, Chair. I hope a quick comment. Just that, again, at the end of the day, we're voting yes or no to allow the voters to decide this issue. So I believe, again, that the millage subcommittee did its work and its recommendation and how it's been amended. Disappointed that the level's at .5, however, I'll take that part of the low.
.25.
.25. Sorry, I keep .25. I mean, Pam got it all down.
I was going to say, if you're disappointed at .5...
Sorry. No, no, no. I would be, because anyways. But that's a different conversation. However, to clarify, that when Commissioner Antor said that some people are disappointed that, or worse than disappointed, that people without skin in the game get to vote on this, is it not true that all rental properties pay property tax? When I saw by accident the tax bill to the house that my daughter part rents, there was all the property millage. So renters pay property tax. The landlord directly writes the check, but the landlord passes that on to the renter. So there's a myth out there that somehow renters don't pay...
They don't have to jack up their rent?
They don't have to, but you show me one landlord that doesn't?
Is it proportioned?
I will show you a landlord across the street from my house that's raising it $400 for no reason, because he can. And you're going to tell me that if the landlord, I'm sorry, landlords don't have to, but 99.9% of them do, and they pay.
We'll have a discussion about that.
Renters pay.
They pay. They pay rent. They don't pay property taxes.
Okay. That part is offline a spit from our focus. So...
It's true.
Yes, Commissioner Mast? You haven't.
I like the big property tax.
Please. It's Commissioner Mast. Commissioner Mast has the floor.
You know, there's a perception that we just throw anything out at the voters and let them decide. I, you know, I've been on this commission for quite a few years and have worked with a lot of millages. I take my responsibility more importantly than that. I think we need to protect all of our constituents. And when I think of my constituents in my district, what do I want to ask them to commit to? I totally believe that we should do something, and I totally believe we should get some extra money. But I think I can comfortably say, please give the county this .25. I cannot ask them to give .50. This is going to be a good program. That's why we recommend it down to six years. Let's let it go. Let's start gradually. After all, this is going to generate about 5.4, 5.7, I see in here. That's going to be much, much more than what they've gotten up to this point. We're going to commit ourselves, and I, hopefully, the following commissions will, to the 730. So we're into six and a half million. Let's work with that. That's what I can ask my constituents to contribute. And it's not just simply throwing it at them. I feel responsible for doing my homework and letting them know this is what I'm going to support. And I will contribute to any group that's going to put this on the ballot and help them with that.
Okay. Commissioner Morgan?
Just getting back to my point again, I think this is a Kent ISD issue. I think a couple of years ago, they passed a millage, two mills or whatever, for perpetuity. I just don't know if this is the right venue for this proposal.
Commissioner Hennessy?
That is a point of information. Can we review what, you know, proposals come to us for consideration for the ballot versus those that are considered, say, by educational facilities? Can you review for us? Who comes to us?
Well, the KISD, the GR Public School, the public school system, they have their own, they have by law a responsibility to place millages on their ballots. They don't need to come to the Board of Commissioners for that. But millage is outside of education, yes. Just to clarify, KISD millage is K through 12. This is zero or before the age of five, instead of kids who are going into kindergarten on up to 12th grade. That's the responsibility for the KISD. So did I answer your question?
I don't know, because I thought the Kent ISD really covered, you know, early things, too. I mean, I just had a grandchild who was evaluated by an ISD, to an ISD, and he was age two. I've had my own children. I had one who was evaluated, you know, at age two or three. So, I mean, I'm not sure that, I'm not sure that that's, they would have had a program.
These are kids in kindergarten?
No.
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 Can we get clarification?
I'm just making a point. In my opinion, this is where I think it needs to be. That's all.
I think I can clarify that. KISD has a program called Bright Beginnings, I believe, is the one that they have. And what you do is you take your children to KISD, and they can be evaluated for language, skills, for these things. But it's not coming into the home and partnering next to the parents and helping teach the parents how better to parent, which is what First Step's main goal is.
Matthew, why don't you come on up and help clarify this one for bed? And while we're on it, we do have county funding in this arena for $730,000. Is that right, here?
Yes, it is. And I guess that's, I was going to quickly summarize.
No, but we have $730,000.
So 20 years ago, the Board of Commissioners roughly approved the prevention initiative of that funding. We do support early childhood millage type programs that are being proposed through the ISD. Bright Beginnings is the one. It does go into people's homes. Local school districts do participate in it, in funding it. They take some of their state assistance fund, and they contribute to the program. They also receive a state grant from the state of Michigan. They continually have had waiting lists and want more people in it, which gets back to the gap analysis that the First Steps put together. We also fund Healthy Start, which is another home-based program. And we've provided funding for that. It's been proven to be successful to our evaluation. The millage that the ISD put forth, as I understand it, is called an enhancement millage. The enhancement millage is for the whole ISD area. It has to be voted on. And it's primarily then up to the school districts what they're going to do with it. This millage, if it were to be put to the voters, you would have the opportunity to direct and control where the funding would go to and not the ISD. Commissioner Morgan's point about it's the ISD's, I think, to own is a valid point. I think it's also valid to consider if the county should do it, and that's why you're here to make that determination. So I hope that helps to clarify what it is.
My only point.
Yep, so.
Okay. Commissioner Voorhees?
Thank you. Earlier in our deliberations, we appropriated, passed through a $1,155,730 for the Kent County Community Action Services. Does any of that money go to young families or to children?
Those funds are used to provide staff and direct support to families for things like utility shut-offs, eviction notices, real direct services, homeless prevention funding. And they're not home-based services such as being recommended by the millage proponents.
Okay. All right. Commissioner Steck, if you could come up. One of the questions that Commissioner Hennessy hit upon that I think is important, when we've had other questions before us, my memory has served that we've always had a determination and understanding of where current allocated money that the county puts in, what would then have a result if it passed or if it didn't. For example, the Veterans Millage, it was clearly stated that even if that Veterans Millage passed, the county funding would stay. With the zoo and museum, it was clearly stated if that passed, any additional funding, with the exception of the CIP options they have, that would stop. What's the answer here? What's, is there, so my question is, you have the 730, what, out of the 730,000, what overlap, if any, if this millage passes, does impact that, that potentially could come off the table?
Yeah. So I believe the subcommittee considered that one of the stipulations that we could have put on the approval is that the 730 current funding be withdrawn, that if it is approved, that the 730 would stop. So you'd be trading dollars off. We determined not to do that. In fact, conversely, it was the expression that the 730 would continue. But as Wayman pointed out, it's not stipulated that the approval is conditioned on that continuing. And in fact, that's up to the subsequent commissioners to determine year after year what level of additional funding out of the general fund would continue to be contributed to that. So our determination was not to stipulate it as a set-off.
So again, my question is, what overlap of funding is there with what we do with the 730 and what this proposed millage will do?
Well, we didn't see it as an overlap. What we saw it as if it's approved, it would be a supplement. So it would provide additional funding that would then be determined in a mechanism similar to the senior millage. So that allocation committee would make the determination as to specifically what programs and in what amounts would be distributed, whether it's supplemented the existing program that's funded with the 730, would be up to that allocation committee.
Okay. Carol, does that answer that part? Because I think you brought that up. I wanted to make sure it was addressed and answered. Okay. Thank you, Commissioner Steck. Any other thoughts, questions, and comments? All right. Seeing none. Pam, I would like a roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Hennessy?
Yep. This is on the .25.
Yes, we are voting on the Finance and Physical Resource Committee, the .25 for the early childhood millage.
Yes. Commissioner Antor?
No.
Commissioner Breevy?
Yes.
Commissioner Bukowski?
Yes.
Commissioner Mast?
Yes.
Commissioner Melton?
Yes.
Commissioner Morgan?
No.
Commissioner Voorhees?
No.
Chair Jones?
Yes. Motion passes. So with that, it will go to LHR, I believe, is the next step. So LHR will see it. And then if they pass it, it would go to the full board. If they don't, it dies there, is my understanding. Is that correct, Linda?
That is correct.
Okay. All right. We have more agenda items. We need to go to item five, the Kent County, from Kent County Community Action. Wayman?
This is a request to approve contracts with community rebuilders for the continuum of care program, accept and appropriate $1.4 million to the 2018-19 COC from the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development and authorize the board chair or designated to sign the agreements. As part of the COC program, United States Department of Urban Development, Housing and Urban Development has awarded funds to Kent County for sponsored based rental assistance and tenant-based rental assistance for homeless persons. The COC program is designed to link rental assistance to supportive services for hard-to-serve homeless individuals and families. The KCCA recommends contracting with community rebuilders to administer the supportive housing components of the COC program due to the historic performance of community rebuilders and how that impacts hot scoring of this project. The contracts, if approved, will allocate $444,000 for sponsored based rental assistance and administrative costs, and $8,556 to Kent County Community Action administrative costs to, for those programs. $929,279 to community rebuilders for tenant-based rental assistance and administrative costs, and $17,831 to Community Action for administrative costs. The period of contracts will be from July 1, 2018, to June 30, 2019. Assistant Corporate Counsel will review and approve the agreements as to form.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve?
Subdued.
Submoved and supported. Questions, comments, and discussion? Yes, Commissioner Voorhees?
I see in this here, the KCCA, which we allotted the, that was just a pass-through, the $1 million. So we pay them for the administrative costs of what the...
There's administrative, this program allows for just a 6% administrative cost. So we collect 3%, and then we have to pass per federal statute, 3% to our subcontractor, community rebuilders. So that's why we identify that here for you.
Okay. Any other questions, comments, or discussion on this one? Seeing none. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion passes. That brings us to fiscal services. There's a financial status report. Steve is at...
Good morning again, Commissioners.
Hi, Steve.
Good morning.
This is the first quarter financial report. You probably noticed it looks a little different than the ones you've seen in the past. We're trying to refine it, put a little more economic data in it, giving the basis for why we see some of the things happening that we see for Kent County. The part that I will cover will look very similar to what you've seen in the past. So if you took, excuse me, if you turn to page five, I will go over the revenues and expenses for the quarter. As you know, I like to do the revenues first in gross, and then the monthly, and then the, excuse me, the third quarter, or the first quarter, and then the significant variances that I identify. So the budget provides for revenues, a 1.3% increase from 170.1 million to 172.3 million. The quarter to date... The quarter to date has a decline of 14.2% from 2017 at 18 million to 15 million point four. Some of the significant variances going down the left side, taxes. Taxes have increased from 1.4 million to 1.8 or 24.5%. Again, as it is most times this year, it's just timing question of when those come in. Don't expect any surprises at this point. The intergovernmental revenues have decreased from 3.7 million to 2.7 million or 28.3%. This is primarily to, due to the fire department's dispatch that we were collecting from the local units that went away at the end of 17. This will work itself out with the new surcharge that we have, so no concern, it's just a different place from which we will get the revenue. The investment rents and royalties have decreased from 2.3 million to 1 million, about 56.9%. This is a difference in timing. Payments from the DHHS payments, we had three in 2018 versus five in 2017. And a courthouse lease, the timing of when we build that. Again, those things will work themselves out as we get into second, second quarter. Any questions on the revenues? Looking at the expenditures, budget provides for a 2% increase in expenditures, 169 million up to 172.4 million. At the end of the quarter, expenditures were up a 9.2% from 32.1 to 35.1. Some of the expenditure variances have followed. Personnel category has increased from 17.9 million to 19.8 million or 10.7%. This is due to the new payroll system posting payrolls on accrual basis rather than a cash basis as it did under, under people saw. That again, is one of those timing issues will work itself out over the year. And because of that timing difference, we're actually showing about 1.5 more payrolls this year compared to the prior period. But again, like I said, that just works itself out over the year.
Commissioner Morgan?
Steve, when we went to the accrual for the payroll...
Yep.
...at the year-end, do we have to throw back any money into that, into '18s?
Yeah, we had, what, you didn't pay anymore.
No.
But what we do, the line changed, okay? And because we moved that pay start date back a week, it ended up being a two-week accrual versus a one-week accrual.
Got it.
Okay? But you still just pay people for what they... The supplies category has increased from .3 million, excuse me, has, from .3 million to .5 million or 58.7%. Primary reasons for this is increases in operating supplies, uniform, vehicle supplies, gas, oil, grease, things like that. Probably the most notable thing is gas prices are up about 40%, which leads to a nice little increase in those costs that we have to face. And then capital, capital increased from .4 million to .9 million or 128%. The primary reason for that is the timing and purchase of vehicles. When we switched to the, to new police vehicles, they're difficult to get. So as soon as you guys adopt the budget, we started issuing a notice of intent to buy, and we try to buy them as early as we can to make sure we get them shipped in and are available for this year. I don't know if that will ever improve, but we, we just continue to work it through to make sure we have adequate vehicles.
Yes, Commissioner Voorhees?
Thank you. Steve, was that some of the dollars that we, the, from the zoo millage, that we had $2 million in that year? Didn't we appropriate some of that for automobiles or for vehicles, or was it all just...
There was a portion of that, and I can't remember exactly what it was because I believe in the original budget, we, we scaled back and then added back in for some money from the debt. I can't remember exactly, but I think it was around 300,000. But really has nothing to do with why we pushed it up. I mean, pushing it up is the availability of vehicles, getting them here. And that's it for what I look at as significant expenditure variances, unless you have some questions about that.
Yes, Commissioner Morgan?
Thanks.
I'm going to go to that next.
Never mind.
I thought maybe I'd touch on fund balance a little bit, too.
Sorry to get ahead of you.
Okay. If you look at the, the net revenue thing under the column for 2017, actual, actual subject audit, it may be a few bucks off. You'll be getting a full report from auditors at your board meeting on the 28th. But essentially, we ended up with a surplus of about 1.1 million for 2017. Now, that sounds pretty good, except that if you look at the minimum fund balance, it's supposed to be 71.54, and actual fund balance now will be about 70.79. In other words, we no longer hit our 40%. We are now at 39.58% or about $742,000 below what the minimum fund balance is. Now, if you review our policy, it says that if that occurs, we will make it up in a subsequent year. So that would be my hope during 2018, that we would have enough surplus to get minimum fund balance back up to target of 40%.
Yes, Commissioner Voorhees?
We're always concerned then what effect that will have on our bond ratings. Has anybody ever sat down and looked at, if you bonded for 50 million, what's the difference in the, what are we saving? You know, if we're neglecting some needs in our community because we don't want to hurt our, then what is that we're talking about? What kind of dollars, I guess?
If you read the write-ups that we get from, from the rating agencies, one thing they say that could lower our bond rating is a significant drop in our flexibility or cash position. Two, they also say that the county has strong financial policies and adheres to them. This is not an exact science, so with this, it says, okay, if we miss it, we have a plan for getting back to that target. That's why I would say I'd be more concerned if we didn't do it in 2018 like the policy calls for.
Thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Melton?
Thank you, Chair. On that same subject, Commissioner Voorhees, since you brought it up, is, is the county level held to a different fund balance standard than, say, a city commission or a school district?
I'm sorry, I'm having trouble missing that question. Could you repeat it?
Is, is, is the county, is a county held to a different fund balance level or standard than a city or a school district to get the AAA bond rate rating?
I think each local unit government is held to its own standard.
Okay.
Because one of the reasons we have a larger fund balance than some is the fact that we have to provide, and when I go to the next page, we have to provide the ability to provide cash flow because we owe almost six to seven months before our tax levy starts actually coming in when we're there.
Okay.
So if you actually looked at fund balance today, all those things being equal, we would not be anywhere close to where we're on a, on a fund, fund balance that you're at. As I've explained several times, it's a cycle, and we want to be there at the end of each year, so we have to continue to monitor it. But, but right now, that's probably one of our single biggest components, is cash flow of our fund balance.
Correct. But would, would a lower fund balance for the county have a direct effect on our bond rating?
Oh, absolutely.
To how low?
How low? Uh...
Does that reinforce it?
Again, it's not an exact science. But what, what I'm saying to you is that we have demonstrated over years of going to New York, that through the full cycle, we start with 70, they're about 70 million, and we finish with about 70 million. Yeah, we know it dips way down in, in the summertime, that's why we maintain it fund balance. What number does that get down? All I know is they use the word significant. I don't know what significant means in terms of dollars and cents.
Yes, Commissioner Morgan?
Thank you. When you talk about cash flow, one of the positions we're in, we don't have to issue DTAN notes to cover our expenses, which would be an additional cost...
That's right.
...to do that.
Well, you know, that, that's one of the choices you have, is if you don't have cash flow, you have to issue notes. We do not have to do that.
I need to have to borrow for, to meet a payroll.
Yeah, to meet payroll, absolutely.
Nobody wants to do that.
Not me. I don't want you borrowing my paycheck.
No one, no one. I've done it, so I...
And Wayman, our fund balance is set by our board, our...
Yeah, the policy.
Yeah, it's our policy, to answer your question, that sets that. Our policy.
Our policy.
Yep.
And getting back to cities...
No, it's, it's our policy.
And getting back to cities and schools, a lot of cities don't have a fund balance, and a lot of them are in receivership.
That's correct. And what we, we took, we took the serious, or the situation serious when Gatsby 34 came out, we changed the composition of fund balance and actually adopted our own fund balance policy. But we are held to that standard. I want to make it clear, it's our policy, but we're held to that standard because they actually monitor whether we, we keep it and if we, and this year, when we miss it, whether we will actually deal with it.
Okay, anyone else?
And then I'd like to turn, real quick, to page seven and take a look at the graph and to refresh everybody's memory about how this graph looks. The shaded areas you see below are our targets, okay? And when we go through the whole cycle, that's where we want to be, that shaded area, okay? Then if you look at the line graphs, that shows where our cash position is, and you can see that we always bottom out somewhere around June or July. So we're, we're supporting ourselves with that fund balance through that period, okay? Now, this, this graph is cash balances at the end of the first quarter, up 6.8 million or 21.2%. And it's, it's a little misleading because we've got some timing issues of when we book things this year, okay? That graph actually, in my opinion, should be lower. It will be, and I'll talk about that in just a second. We, when we shut off cash, we have a number of days to actually book the cash transfer between funds. We do it receivable, but sometimes if we don't do them quick enough, they don't show up on this graph. And this year, we were going through the transition of getting the payroll system up and all that stuff. Some of this stuff didn't hit it as quick as I wanted to see it. We owe it, we know we owe it, and we've been through it all now as we go through, through the audit. But for sure, I expect that, that top graph now to actually touch the bottom graph in April. And by May, I expect we'll be about 1.1 million below that. And then I would expect the rest of the year, that graph to shape very much like you normally see, but continue to be on the lower side, okay? So the, the two things that are at the end of the quarter, the Correction and Detention Fund, the transfer occurred in the second quarter for the Correction and Detention Fund rather than the first quarter for 2018. So again, that's, that's a timing issue I'm talking about. And then Child Care Fund funded the court until lesser sent the Health Department, got back current with us. That's the good news. The bad news, starting in March, they got behind again. So first quarter did pretty well. Now they're going back to that cycle where they're, they're holding March, April, May till they approve March, so we can get three, five, six months behind with them. And, and again, when that happens, we're funding the cash for that grant. We still got to pay people for their payroll. We still got to pay the bills. It's just one of those unfortunate situations where the state controls when they reimburse us. So I give you a kind of rough thumbnail sketch of where we're at with the cash right now.
Question? Anyone? All right, thanks, Steve. Is that it?
You're welcome.
Great. All right, we move to Commissioner miscellaneous. Is there any Commissioner miscellaneous this morning? Yes, Commissioner Breeby?
Yes.
Thank you, Chair. Just wanted to congratulate the Caledonia Girls' Softball Team at their first win this weekend, their first state district title for softball. So congrats.
Commissioner Mast?
Yes, I want to let my fellow county commissioners know and staff that at last night's Mental Health Board meeting, Network 180 Board meeting, Scott Gilman announced that his, he was not willing to renew his annual contract. So we took action on that last night. It's effective as of Monday. In the meantime, we have a transition manager in Bill Riley, who is the chief operating officer for Network 180, giving us a little bit of time to meet as an executive committee and a board to name an interim manager who will be named. So that's just news that is coming out. We, our, our public relations firm, Seaforth, is going to be sending out a public release today, this morning.
Thanks. Commissioner Melton?
Just a reminder that Saturday, or Friday, is the opening games of the Meyer State Games at beautiful East Kentwood Falcon Stadium. So if you don't even want to come and watch the games, just come and see our beautiful stadium, and you will be treated like royalty, I promise you. So we will be there, my husband and I, and we'd love to see other commissioners there too.
Commissioner Bukowski?
I just want to thank everybody for two hours of democracy, at least that continues to exist here. And in spite of the fact that you don't agree with my wisdom, I, I continue to enjoy hanging out and practicing democracy. Extremely, extremely.
Commissioner Antor?
All right, it goes to Commissioner Bukowski, but I also wanted to make one point, that is affordable housing is a big issue in this area. It keeps being brought up, and we don't have enough of it. And all I can tell you is it's just not bricks and mortar that goes in the cost of a house. It's also all the fees that are attributed. Every time we do a millage increase, it jacks the, the price up of what it costs to get into a house. And it might be the difference between, you know, four PMI insurance or whatever it takes. So it does affect everyone, and I just want to make that point. We usually just think of bricks and mortar, but we got to start thinking a little bit about these millages and start to decide what's it going to do in the long term for quality of life here, so.
Commissioner Voorhees?
I might ask the question, our utilities, what percentage of our total tax value are our utilities, like the power company and them? Pretty, pretty good portion, I don't remember. I remember in Wyoming, they were the number one taxpayer. And when we increase our millages, we increase the millage on our utilities. And I know, I don't know about renters, if they pass it along, but I can tell you that the utility company passes it. So when we increase the millage, we pay for it as taxes and we pay for it in our utilities. Point set.
Anyone else? All right, with that, we are going to be adjourned till Tuesday, July 17, at 8:30.
I am Kent County.
We are 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 Kent County.
Mas era Kent County.
We are Kent County.